Good evening. This is a regular meeting of the planning board of the Village Dows Ferry on April 7, 2017.
September.
We have seven items on our agenda tonight. I've been advised by a representative of the applicant for item 4, 364 Ashford Avenue, that they will not be presenting tonight. And we would await the information we need to go forward on this subdivision. First item on our agenda, item one, is to adopt minutes for the planning board meeting of August 3, 2017. I've reviewed the minutes and I had no corrections or additions. Anybody else have anything that matters or can add?
I just have a question. I'd forgotten. Anna, did you have to leave before --
I --
Suddenly, all these I-votes started falling off.
Oh, yeah, I did, actually.
Okay, okay.
My babysitter.
It's noted, actually.
Huh?
It's noted.
Is it noted?
Yeah. It's 9:25. She was trying to keep that pointed.
Okay.
I know.
Item number 8, 364 Ashford.
I wasn't trying to out you.
No, no, it's okay.
I'm trying to prove that I looked at the minutes.
Under this discussion, it said Mrs. Walker was addressing the board, that she addressed the board. So she was, wasn't she concerned with Eldon Avenue?
Yeah, that too.
So, so she did make comments?
Yes.
For that.
No other comments, I would, I would move the adoption of the minutes. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
I'll second.
Would you second?
For the record.
For the record. Number two, item number two, Riverstown Square Project, continuation of public hearing for amended site plan approval for proposed relocation in the trash management area. I just had a thought before you, before you start. The board gets, as required under our law, all papers on, on all the applications that are presented to us. I think this board has found that while paper is helpful and legal, that there's nothing better than actually seeing the project, seeing where the project will be, something to be done, which we term a site visit. And we have found those to be increasingly helpful, and this board, I think, has been very active in doing that. And that was the case here where the, you know, I was absent away, but there was a site visit here looking at the implications of this request, and I think, I think it was found to be very helpful by the board members. Yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Burke?
Thank you.
This is not different than what you got, or?
This is the same that was PDF that was on the --
I said Mr. Palmer, but I was --
The same as PDF, okay.
Susan Burke from Sabre Real Estate Advisors. I just circulated a slightly revised plan. This is hard to see on here, so I figured it would be easier for you to see it up close through glasses. I was not at the meeting on site, but I know that they had asked if we could move the compactors a little bit further to be 100% out of the easement area. So, this is really hard to see with the projection, but the, the compactors have a hopper on them, and the hopper area is here. Originally, we had the chutes coming down into the front of the hopper, and because we're custom designing, this entire compactor is smaller than whatever we have to design it just for the space, we've moved the hopper further to the back, so we were able to pull the whole unit further to the north. And I know, I know you guys don't know who was at the meeting, I wasn't there, but I think, I'm not sure if Marty ran the compactor, they would be hitting on it, because I actually went out there and I looked at a decibel meter on my phone, and I was really surprised at actually how quiet it is. It's really not even as loud as the one more.
What was the reading on your phone? To remember.
I didn't have to look. I had, I had given all the information to Marty, I guess he didn't give it to you.
No, he, he actually measured it too, and I just wondered if you had the same, if you got the same readings. It's okay.
I don't worry. It was very surprising to me, actually, how, how very quiet it is. So, then I know we had spoke about the enclosure. And we had discussed the concrete, which I was actually in Livingston today, this is in our Livingston location, where we have open containers, and all tenants are furious, they stink. I'm removing them immediately and putting compactors in. It just, the entire parking lot stinks. It's just everywhere. I'll never plan another, I'll never let Marty plan another site that we can't put two compactors, one for recycling and one for white garbage. It's far superior to an open container. They, they don't close the lids, they just, they don't close the doors with the compactor. You can, there's a back door here, you can get in the back door, it's dark, a lot of chutes, but there's no mess. Otherwise, you're going to have people, you know, somebody kneeling down the elevator and put it somewhere else, and then the doors are open, and it's just a mess. Because garbage is my biggest problem in all of our sites, and I'm done with open containers. Anybody have any questions?
So I, I had a question, which was the, you know, what do you expect to happen up on the railing level? You know, people are coming with bags and --
The railing level, you know, I'm representing by press or program or whatever, it has to be higher than a child can climb into it, and so up top, that the doors would be blocked.
Well, not just on the camp, I'm just concerned about maintenance and trash spilling, that that becomes your garbage area up on the railing, up on the balcony. And what measures, I mean, because now people are coming with bags, or either dragging them, or carts, or, you know, what measures you have so you don't have spillage up there?
Well, the tenants have to be, you know, somewhat, you know, diligent about --
Well, I mean, you just expressed that people are not that diligent.
Well, this is because the, the tops are open. This is different, where you, you know, you have to put it in, you have to close the thing, you have to push the button. You know, it's a property manager, I, I own my sites all the time, making sure. They're not doing that, that's part of the rules of, you know, their mission of the lease, that they're not keeping it clean.
Is, I mean, would it be prudent to have a hose bib up on the balcony, or a drain, or some way to facilitate cleanup?
There's, there's water in all those facilities.
Can you please move back towards the light stand? Thank you, sorry.
No, I think the speaker was feeding back.
All those facilities are there, and we have our electrical room, and the plumbing room, and everything, so all, we have all that, because that way, we're, you know, we power wash the sidewalks and everything, so that's all already there.
Right.
Any other board members have any questions?
Yeah, I do. What is the, I'm trying to understand, and maybe this is, Darius can sort of clarify, the issue of the easement has been raised, and I'm trying to understand what the intent of that was, and where that easement actually is.
The red line is the easement?
Well, except in this, that's a very, very thick red line, and I'm trying to figure out what the, the, where, where the easement really is relative to the, like, if you look at section, because it would be, it'd have to be a lot more than two feet, if, unless the easement is --
I think it's, there's a dimension right there, two feet, you see at the bottom?
It allows two feet of egress at ground level, at grade level.
Right, but measured from where, is what I'm trying to --
Well, that's from the center of the red line, I think.
That's what I'm trying, that, that red line on this sketch is a foot wide. So, right, from where to where is that? That is from the edge of the deck above, like in the section?
I think that's the, so the encroachment, I think it's saying is two feet, so.
You, you, you can't see it, but here, you know, your easement line is from the edge of the deck to here.
Right, so that's more than two feet, that, right?
No, Anthony Jancy is showing this line to this line as two feet.
One inch equals five feet, is it, what's the scale? One inch equals 10 feet. 10 feet is --
Well, this reduction, I'm not sure if this is to scale.
That's not.
Probably not.
I'm just looking at the 15-foot-three dimension, let's say, where the, where the 12-inch-thick concrete slab, and if that's one, if that's one foot, the thickness of the slab in this section, then the distance that this equipment is beyond the edge of the deck above is well more than a foot, well more than two feet.
You mean as shown on this drawing?
As shown on this drawing. I mean, what is the diameter, what is the actual, what's the diameter of the chute?
I believe it's three feet.
So, right, so there's no way we're within the two feet if the easement line corresponds to the edge of the deck above?
Well, there's another, you see there's a --
So that's why I'm wondering, is it, that's why I'm trying to figure out where is the actual easement?
Yeah, it's not the face of the, there's another line that says face of deck. See that, to the right? And that's a foot to the right of that, of the red line, so.
So if your chute is two feet, and it's in the sand, are you, you know, where?
Could you put your finger down a little further near the bottom? Just follow the red line down.
Right here?
Keep, keep going down, keep going down, right there. Now you're pointing at face of deck.
That's the upper deck.
Yeah, that's what we're doing. That's what he's, so the red line is not the face of deck?
No.
It looks like it.
Is not the face of --
That's why I'm saying, what is determined, how is the edge of the eas, what is the edge of the easement? How is that set? What does it relate to? How is it, how is it determined? If it's not the physical edge of the deck above, then what, how is that, which can't be?
It's like a property line, yeah.
Right.
It's basically, it's, you know, it's a divined space.
It's honestly unclear in the internal documents.
Was it shot? Is it set up?
Yeah.
Is there a real number? Where is that line?
I don't think it corresponds with the physical thing, it's like a property line.
So the easement is a meets and bounds. There's a meets and bounds to the easements, or at least an exhibit to it.
And is that --
So it's from, it's from the north end, two feet in of the easement, how it's --
I'm just saying, what we have is a thick dashed line. It's not clear to me, I'm trying to figure out where the actual easement is, and whether we're within two feet of it.
So the easement, I mean, I think it's graphics, but basically, they're representing that the easement is the red line, is the very center line of the red line. They just drew it really fat, so you could see it. And from that point, two feet out, they are compliant, is what they're representing here.
But their two-foot --
From the red line.
Their two-foot dimension line, though, goes beyond the red line to the right, right?
They're extending this way in plan, to the left in the plan, into the easement, which is permitted.
Also, what is the, the language that relates to the easement? Again, Darius, what is it for? What does it say?
Let me pull it up, I know we're just reading it. Wait one moment. I'll pull it up. If I can.
These are outside arrows, you know.
Yeah.
So, right, it'd be a line that goes through, so that's two feet from there to there.
You got it? Sorry, I was trying to do electronic, and it's not working.
That's okay.
On page, this easement was dated May 19, 2014, and Dows Ferry Capital Partners gave Alfred Constantine the easement. And part of that easement is act, is a section, access to the area. And it talks about the, you know, reading, "The easement shall not preclude and shall permit access to the area by Dows Ferry Capital Partners, DFCP, et cetera." And under, there's one, two, and then a little three. "The above-ground encroachment into the area of the structure of Building J is shown on Exhibit C. Provided with such encroachment, shall not occupy any airspace within the area less than 17 feet above grade. Do not encroach any more than two feet into the area." So that's the language.
So that's all the stuff above grade?
The, the original exhibit is, I'll see.
So, because this is more than 17 feet, the top, does that --
I don't think, is it more than 17 feet?
Yeah, 20 feet.
20 feet to the deck?
To the deck.
To the deck.
Right, but it's not within the easement, that's --
That part's not within the easement area?
That part is within the closure of the easement.
Which part?
The 20 feet, the above 17?
The chute, the chute and the control and the room.
So the pad is in the easement area?
Correct.
Not the, not the chute, okay. So you have a pad that is vertically moving?
Yeah, we moved it all back, and Anthony knew this, to be, we're going to lose two parking spaces no matter what, so it's just a matter of whether it's this way or that way, as long as we can design the, the back of the compactor.
And, and where this was, this was initially an ATM, I think this is just the same place?
Yes, well, it's like, I think the ATM was a little further down, it was actually closer to the house, and --
Yes, no, yeah, it was, it was right across the garage.
Yeah, it was more, it was closer to the garage and board in there.
This is the same, two feet, just further to the west, I guess.
Correct.
The two feet from the, from what, from the drive-through?
There's no real specific --
Safe plan?
It's so terrible, it's in the --
There's no specific meets and bounds or descrip, or just a, a, it's a yellow area that is enclosed, that is marked out as the easement. Then there's a little portion of it that indicates the encroachment into the easement by the ATM in the tongue, which is the reference to the two feet.
Also, I know that there was an issue, you know, there was discussion about what this, the wall should be, the fence versus some kind of masonry wall or something. And the issue was raised about access to the equipment. How, is that now resolved? We can, even with the fence hard up against the back of the equipment, you can access it?
I believe so. We can, if we need to, we can always pull the containers out and get back there. I mean, I would prefer a lighter duty enclosure, but it's worth all the stuff, I'll put it there. I mean, it's actually fairly handsome. When I was down in Livingston, I was like, that's, so that, you know, that's a wood door, so it's pretty nice, actually, for garbage. Certainly nicer than a Chauncey Square house, the --
Any other comments by the board?
So I, I just want to be clear, the, the proposal is, as it's drawn, the cedar fence with spruce posts? Or is it concrete block?
This is concrete block. This is a metal post, which likely would be on the face of the end of this, to make it slightly more accessible. This is a mistake, we're going to have to move this down there.
Okay, so what's represented in this drawing is not what you're proposing?
Well, the board had asked for this, I'm thinking I'm going to revise the --
Got it, okay.
Oh, okay. So the privacy fence should be the same you are?
Right.
Right, originally, the fence was matched to the plans we have around the accountable equipment and the deck. So Marty just thought that maybe this would be preferable, help block some of the sound and --
It's a public hearing, if anyone wishes to be heard, this would be the appropriate
Lee Constantine, I just wanted to make a few comments.
Could I, just before you do, Lee, just for the record, my understanding is that you're not the property owner, or do you have a par of attorney, or what, on what basis are you appearing?
That's irrelevant, this is a public hearing, I can state my name and speak at it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. I'd like to say one thing first, to start with. The reason you don't have any meets and bounds in your record is because, if you read the easement agreement, the developer was supposed to, within 30 days of that signing, provide a survey. It has never been provided to date. Second of all, yesterday, I went to the building department, and I asked if there were any new plans revised or otherwise. I was told, no, there wasn't. I was shown plans from May 19. Since this is a public hearing, how can you have a new revised plan without the public having the opportunity to read it, let alone review it or agree with it? So we were never given that. And Chairman, I believe you were not at that site plan walk, and --
That's correct, as I said earlier.
Right, and I think that you could have had an opportunity within yourself to go and look at it. I know the site plan developers were ambiguous and did not even, you know, want to state where the easement was. None of you knew where it was, I was the one who told you where it was, approximately according to the measurements. I asked the building department yesterday, how many feet is the encroachment? I was told by, using the ruler that was approximately eight feet, and that's what we measured on site. I'm told now that it has changed. I still, also, if you read the agreement back on May 19, that was just quoted, it said that the ATM in the drawing on Exhibit C was supposed to be the ATM outside of the easement. That language is written on the drawing. And also, that's what we signed up for, a garbage dumpster, a garbage compactor doesn't substitute for that. So I think there are a lot of issues here, that you can't vote on something without the proper footage, without the proper knowledge, to go ahead and vote on something. Also, us to have our chance to review all the updated plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
I just have another comment.
Yes, please.
I think the only way that's right and fair to everybody for a proper understanding is that the site to be staked out exactly where it's going to be, where the chute is going to come down, where the pad is going to be, where the actual compactor is going to be, and also, will there be any egress necessary to get on the back of the easement, even though they're proposing two feet? How many feet do they need to service it or access it? Thank you.
This applicant, this, the board will be making, when it makes a decision, will be making a decision to refer this to the Board of Trustees because of, because this site was, was a Board of Trustee approval, so we're, at this point, we're not, we would not be making a final decision, but we would be making a recommendation.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
So just on that, is it true that there was never a survey done? Darius, do you know?
I don't see a survey.
So we, so, I mean, this is presumably, this is not, I mean, there will be a condition, presumably, for this to move forward, is that this is surveyed accurately?
Well, there's a provision in it. The survey of the area, the exhibit being, the depiction of the area, exhibit C, are intended solely for the purposes of determining the boundary of the area for the purposes of this agreement, to the other effect. The representative shall be prepared by DFCP within 30 days of the date of this agreement's ST. I mean, the, the, the issue, you know, careful what you wish for. If they didn't do it, does it void the easement? It avoids revagness? Is there no easement? Is this just Dows Ferry Capital Partners property? I understand that she wants it, it's not a bad idea to survey, to see where it is?
Yeah.
And maybe you could recommend that, that that be done?
I mean, is that, and in terms of the, of moving forward, without the survey and knowing accurately, is that a condition, or would that be --
Well, you're making a recommendation, if you decide to do anything tonight, you can make that a condition, to say that the, the easement area will be surveyed to determine the meets and bounds.
And if it's not substantially similar to what we're looking at, then it would come back?
Yeah.
All right.
Otherwise, we're just kicking it down the road, kicking a can down the road.
Well, I mean, basically, we're being, we're entitled to rely on drawings in front of us. If they end up being, you know, wholly inaccurate, then obviously, we'd have to reconsider.
Needs to come back.
Yeah.
We won't put it on, we won't put it on the agenda for the Board of Trustees.
And then to the issue of the access, my understanding is that you don't need access to the backside of this. Once this is built, all of your service and access and everything happens from the parking deck area, correct?
It can be accessed from the front and serviced.
You don't need --
We'll just have to, you know, if we need to get to something, we may have to --
But you'd never go around the --
Remove the containers.
You never go around the back of the enclosure?
In, in Livingston, we do have a back door. I mean, it would be nice, but if we don't, you know, we don't have to have it, if we need to get in there to service something, we can move the containers out, and --
But I mean, this proposal, obviously, it's cedar here, but this is a U-shaped enclosure, and there's no door on the back or anything like that, so.
There is a door on the back, but, because on, in Livingston, there's a sidewalk behind it, so we made it so they can access the front and the back.
Why do you need the back? Why do you need to get to the back of the enclosure? Not the back of the compactor. Why does somebody need to go onto the adjacent --
Just because of garbage that's fallen, I, just, you know, for convenience.
Well, yeah, I mean, cleanup, but I mean, to, right, but it's not to --
Not to service.
Function, it's not a functional requirement, it's a --
No.
Okay, thank you.
No, I mean, it would be nice, but.
So is the enclosure held meant to be masonry?
Yes.
That's what the board asked, last time I was here.
So that'd be a condition.
Marty thought that it was good-looking.
I have a question about, when this issue came up, which was why this, the, I'm looking at the section, why the chute couldn't be inboard of the perimeter beam of the deck above, and the --
You can't, because then somebody's fallen in. It has to be above the child type. You mean, put it in the floor?
No, I, I think you -- So what I'm, and what was explained to me was that there was, that that open space corridor is part of an egress route.
Right.
So how much distance is required for egress from the back of Building J to whatever the position would be of this upper piece of equipment? Do you, you know what I'm saying?
This area here?
I'm sorry?
In this area here, between these two buildings is, I'm guessing, what is five feet?
But that's not where your chute's parked?
Right, so this all along here continues five feet.
Is that what's required? Do you know, do we know actually what is, do we know what that's, if that's what actually required? What actually is required in terms of keeping that as a legal egress corridor for that, whatever the load is on that egress?
The sidewalk isn't going to affect it, because the chute's going to be on the outside.
No, what I'm, what I'm trying to understand is whether or not there's a solution in which all of this is done inboard of the perimeter beam? And when we talked about it on site, and then in which case, the easement issue is completely gone. And I guess the question then is whether or not the, the equipment above, access into whatever the -- And I guess the question then is whether or not the, the equipment above, the access into whatever the box is, it's shown at the top of this chute. And I don't know if it can be oriented differently to reduce the encroachment on the egress, but I'm, I'm wondering where the back of Building J is.
So it's, when you're up there, there's a handrail and it's about five feet to the building. So this is not really accurate, where it says parking deck and it has a cutoff of the slab, there's actually Building J right there. So by the time you move that inboard, you would have almost no passage left. I mean, I guess maybe two feet. Does that make sense? If you move that entire...
Is that really the case? Do you know that that, right, it's five feet? I don't remember it being that.
It's pretty narrow, yeah. So I think you're right because you see it's encroaching even above the railing somewhat into that, and if this is accurate at all, you know, it's six inches, it's stealing from that. But I'm sure you can't make a hole in the passage.
You can't make a hole in the floor because then you would have the...
Nothing left, yeah.
Well, you would have the danger of somebody falling into it.
Well, you can't have the chute coming up through the walk.
Right.
Because there's not any, right. That was a question.
You could try to shoot into the building and have the movement to the other side of the walk if that was, if you're trying to get away from that issue. And then everything would move all the way up. And then you just open like a door on the wall like you open any other door.
Notch the building.
Notch the building.
Or carve out a part of the space in the interior building.
Yeah, that's right.
And you just throw the garbage in from inside the building. You would have to go outside.
This is for more than Building J, all right? No, you'd still do it for me.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that. Parking deck structurally, what's pull, pull up there? If you could do that. You could hold it for it. I know there's a lot of...
So I think, you know, my sense is that really we're, it's not, I mean, obviously, we're trying to make this as good as possible, but basically, there's an existing solution that has been approved, which is dumpsters, which you started your presentation by saying how nasty they are. And these would be out on Sommo River. You could just point to it there on the plan so we can be clear. So that's what's approved, is to have dumpsters right there near the house facing Sommo River Parkway, right?
Right, except we can't get a large amount of truck up here.
Well...
So that was Murray's other thought process, was that the town has tiny trucks. Trust me, we've thought of everything that we can think of to make, this isn't, this is a very expensive thing for us to do. It's not certainly the cheapest thing. It's going to cost us a lot of money, but the best...
So my point is only that, that there, there's, you know, they accept the default solution, which is there on the deck. And I didn't know about this functional issue, but, and then what's being proposed, so...
Well, or as George said, putting it somehow inboard in another location.
I think then you would wind up with below here, your dumpsters are going to block your, your, you're not going to get in and out of the parking lot.
No, everything would be, yeah.
And you can't swish around and then I have a way of the truck getting in and out. I mean, as it is, the truck is really tight in there. And I've been out there with probably five different garbage companies trying to figure out a solution. I even have, this guy has got a modified truck to get in there. I mean, he's got a custom-made truck with custom-made compactors. It's just tiny.
Well, the, separating the two issues out in a way, one is that, that we do not have a survey instrument that's been drawn and was supposed to be drawn as part of the easement agreement, in which we need to make sure that we're in compliance with the easement agreement. So we had in our staff reported and the resolution required that that be done, so that we do have evidence that this can be put on, in an area that is allowed in the easement agreement. So that we, I mean, you could wait and say, let's get the survey first and have it all done. Or you could at this point, because it's a recommendation, if there's an approving body, that we would, we would, I think, stop, get the, get the survey done. But since it's a recommendation, I think the requirement that the survey be produced is something that we can do without actually having it in front of us. Or we could require it, if we do. That's one issue that you could separate out from the other.
Yeah.
And where's the survey? Does the line match up with what they have the right to use access? And does this facility fit within that? That, I think, is something that the applicant has tested that it does, and we just need proof of that in a form of a, a, a survey. The other issue of, I think Javier headed down fairly straightforward, that what was better in terms of everybody, as far as we could see, was not have the dumpsters that were in, in the original plan and replace them with these. Then we start to broaden it out and say, let's put them inside the building and things like that. That's where I don't have a great bit of guidance for, other than if this complies with easement agreement and if it, as drawn and as proposed, it would appear to be superior to what's, what's approved already. That's about all I can say.
I don't, I think this is far superior as a solution. That's not what makes me uncomfortable. What makes me uncomfortable is the easement issue.
Well, if we do, if we do the survey requirement...
Yeah.
But we know the most about this. This board knows the most. We've been to the site.
Right.
We've looked, so you'd be passing it on to, you know, a decision-making body that doesn't know as much as we do. So I think we should get the survey and then go from there. That's my opinion.
All right. Well, if we're waiting for a survey, I think we should update the drawings to show the cement, I mean, show the actual full proposal, right?
I may as well put each four of these plans on a set, you're going to go eleven by fourteen. Maybe we could put each four of these plans on a separate sheet.
Okay.
Also, I think they asked this question in an, in an email. I think I know the answer because I think it's intuitive, but I'm curious about it. The chute has to be vertical, absolutely vertical?
Yes.
There's no...
Garbage doesn't make turns.
Well, there's a difference, there's a turn and there's a slope. I mean, I'm wondering, I'm not saying that there's a ninety-degree angle. I'm trying to understand, does it have to be dead vertical? Does the, do we know that it has to be?
It definitely wants to be without any bends.
No bends. I'm not asking about bends. I'm asking about an angle, sort of a straight shot, whether or not...
Pretty much everybody that I've consulted with thinks trade best.
Oh, I'm sure. Best.
So if we're going to make some drawing updates, could we also show the actual Building J, the back of Building J there in section? If you go back one, to the other plan. Oh, there's a section if you go down.
This section below there that...
Yes, over there, where it says, where it says parking deck, that's actually passage, egress passage. You see it right above? Yeah. No, no, go a little, where the arrow says parking deck, that's not parking deck. That should be egress passage, right? And you should show Building J there.
The back of Building J.
Yeah, and your, your...
To scale.
And your plan says, I mean, according to the graphic in the plan, the chute is touching the edge of face of deck. But in the section, it's not. So I think we want to, you know, make sure it's, all the stuff is as tight as possible.
It probably can be hard up against the...
Well, I think the building sits on the parking lot.
What's that?
The building sits on the parking lot.
No, no, I think what Javier, what you mean is the showing of the, of the chutes. And the plan is shown hard up against the edge of the deck, and then the section is shown floating off six inches or so.
See that gap between the chute?
You want to see the building here.
Well, it's a little bit over there to the right. Move it to the right. Move your finger.
Building's going to be off to the right, right?
Oh, it's...
In this section.
In this section is about, what?
Building J.
Go to the right a little bit, about five feet, right there is where Building J goes up, right? That's the passage.
The other question, right, so back to Building J is here somewhere, right?
Well, yeah, it's going to be two or whatever, or five feet.
Right, so you just, you're just saying you should see that to scale.
Right, so you want to see...
And then this other point is that in the plan, it's shown a certain figure of the chute, shown hard up against this edge. Whereas in reality, I guess, it is shown here, probably flops off of it, six inches.
Yeah, I'm not sure they actually adjusted this because we moved it as far to the back of the hopper as possible. And you may have not, wait, you may have just adjusted the easement.
So you might want to see that you left one on that section two, so that you know exactly...
Yeah.
And the seventeen foot or whatever.
What we asked for is that the surveys be provided for the next meeting. And the exhibit B of the clarified, to show that quarter, that can be Building J and where the chute would be mounted.
And what was the other one?
We wanted, we're going to show the concrete block wall in plan and section.
So the concrete block wall.
Show the easement in section also, if there's a seventeen-foot limit or whatever.
I think I heard four different, four different requirements. I just want to make sure you got all four.
Well, I can, if you have a plan on, if you're asking Murray, I know we need the survey.
And it does have to be, what is the timeframe before the next meeting?
You have two weeks to get it.
The, the normal timing for...
So Dwight, you'll send out a letter. All right.
Chairman?
Yeah.
Yep, yes, go ahead, Lee.
Also, I know you made comments about, oh, it won't face the Sommel Parkway, but there doesn't seem to be any concern by the board about what the residents will see, whether it's in encasement and also the fact that it is a compactor. The point of it is, it is still garbage there and garbage next to a residence is improper from a commercial standpoint. I believe also, if you read the easement really carefully, the agreement, that it talks about access. It doesn't refer to something newly built there, such as a compactor. What it was for the access was for the structural support of Building J and utilities that were to be underground for that building. So that's what was agreed to and on the signing, not in add something new that this is replacing the ATM. Because if you read the updated version of May nineteenth, it said the ATM is to be outside of the easement. So there was never going to be an ATM on the easement, according to the written language, which is on Exhibit C, which you should have in front of you or can pull up electronically. Also, as far as making other suggestions, which I have made, and I think it's obvious that there is a compactor or there is a dumpster underneath the garage at the far northwest side. So I question, how will the trucks pick up those dumpsters? Because I think there's a word that said that we can't get trucks in there. Well, then how will that garbage get picked up? And if it could be a dumpster, it can also be replaced by a compactor under there. Or else put it on the upstairs portion on the far northwest corner, on the upper portion. Either a dumpster or preferably a compactor. I don't think seventeen acres, that that's the most creative way you can do it, is to place it right on the side of the easement, whether it's on or off it, because it is next to a residence. And that is the primary concern as well as the easement encroachment. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, if there's no more tonight, I think you know what, what the board would like for our next meeting. And if you don't, you can call Dwight. No, I don't know. Are you, are you done?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. We will continue the public hearing at our, at our next meeting.
One second.
All in favor? Thank you. Okay, agenda item number three fifty-five Livingston Avenue, continuation of public hearing for site plan approval for proposed complete renovation of multifamily residence to connect to two, to convert to two-family residence additions and grading. I believe we open the public hearing for a second.
Thank you.
All in favor? Thank you. Just before you start, I'd like to acknowledge one, one piece of correspondence from Tom, A. Thomas Weekly at fifty-one Livingston, which I believe is the residence next to this residence.
Yeah, my name is Niall Hayne, I'm the architect for Ron and Lori Russo. It's the project you mentioned with five Livingston. If you only go generally again or just...
I think the new stuff, right, you have landscaping changes, yeah, just that.
Just a couple of changes. I don't know, I'll make sure that it's not seen in... I guess at the last meeting, we requested to enhance the planning plan. We've done, showed the goal of plants and trees inside. I added some perjury planting down in the very southern area of the property. Last time, you know, it seems, my impression was sort of the bone intention here was the fact that the building was located in this street, which is right here. It's drawn small and the surveyor had it, but this is the location. And, you know, as we mentioned in the last meeting, we're doing a type of, we're playing geothermal, we're calling panels on it. And we're doing various, we're applying value installation. Really trying to go all out in terms of the environmental responsibility, so we can rate and not do it in a practical way. So that's important to do, it's important to the client. And it does this every week, a little bit. And what we, and I know we're a bit concerned about it, you know, it's here. And we had a meeting with them, I had a meeting with them, nice friendly meeting with them. And we confirmed that, you know, we sort of agreed that we would plant a tree here, we'd do a nice sized tree, full. We even confirmed with them on it and make sure that he's aware of the placement and he can, we can talk about it.
Especially for some of your, your reviews, that's important to all of us.
So that is our proposal. I, I, again, I feel that's, that's sort of the main issue, because anything else that you want me to speak to.
There's, there's one thing, it's hard to see on yours, but along the, the back line of the property on the latest plans that you gave us, there looked like there was a row of, of...
The west, the south, the riverside?
The riverside.
Yeah.
A row of, of some kind of tree or bush or shrub or something.
Here. Yes, I was saying that, we could add that.
And what, what are you, is really, my question is what?
Name it, I mean, specifically, it's a...
Dullia, green giant.
Yeah.
Green giant.
Six to seven feet tall.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and if you look at the, I can go back to the photographs, there's quite a bit of Livingston, right? You see the backside of the building is there. It's a nice build, build, it's a nice...
No, my, my point, yeah.
And not block the view, just above those.
My question is, it says six to seven feet, is that the, that, that's the size you're going to put in? Or is that the, is that the maximum height to which they...
Oh, no, they grow taller than that. That's the size we're going to try to...
Well, that, that, my question is going to, my question is going to be, if you get too high, then you start blocking views toward the river.
Right, but like any tree, I mean, it'll be a cruelly issue. Right, but like any tree, I mean, it'll be a cruelly issue, I mean, they, they, they do grow, but they don't grow that high. I can't remember the exact limit, but it seemed appropriate just roughly to height that we want. You don't want too much somebody to bother.
All right.
Let me run this through, so I think the beautiful view, you tend to promote trees when needed.
Um, at the roof line of Livingston Ridge is at least fifteen to twenty feet high. So I don't, I think the ample roof for them to grow and, you know, right now, right now our view is that the roof of the ridge, so, so just trying to put some.
I've just had some experience with hemlocks where.
Yeah.
Once you get them up, you don't want to, you don't want a square top on them, so.
Right, 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 I understand.
Yes, I believe the limit's about twenty, about that, I just remember offhand that they, they grow, uh, they grow quicker though, which is less.
These are evergreen?
Yeah, yeah. And it benefits, oh, Winston and the Russians. Uh, and then the other thing, I guess the other comment here, I just thought of the ash tree. And we did mention last time, Ron did have someone come by and look at it and was happily surprised that it doesn't have, it's actually a very healthy ash tree. It doesn't have any of the sort of rock that seems to be in there.
Yeah, Paul, when?
Oh, yeah, he's good.
Yeah, I don't know.
The company.
No, the guy actually goes by that name.
So we made, and remember, we made that out of the number, but we, we, we changed, we reached a probable or change to say the ash tree.
Okay. Good, thank you. The board have anyone on the board have any other questions or comments on this?
Nope.
Good. Thank you. So then I would, I would move, we close the public hearing.
Was it the public?
Public, public, oh, I'm sorry.
Tom, Tom, we, uh, we were thinking one of the students, um, now is very kind to, uh, to add a enlarged tree as a replacement tree in a letter to you. I just asked you to make that part of the site approval so that, uh, so that it's memorialized or whatever. Um, also just to mention that the, the fir trees in the back, it would be great to have a commitment, I mean, they're, they're very, I, they're kind of flat, mind you, uh, with me across, so I, I, then I think it's maybe silly for, for flat dirt there too. So I think just as long as there's some commitment to turn these, uh, at the roof level that you need to log it, but after that, I don't know whether there's another kind of tree or, or just a.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other comments, uh, did we close the public hearing yet?
No, we didn't.
All right, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye. We'll make a resolution then. Village Dog's Ferry Planning Board Resolution granting site plan approval for the conversion of an existing three-family house to a two-family house together with related building additions and site work, fifty-five Livingston Avenue. Whereas Niall Hayne, Architect on behalf of Topside Real LLC owner has applied for site plan approval to convert an existing three-family house into a two-family house and to construct additions to the subject building and make related site improvements at fifty-five Livingston Avenue and denoted on text. Assessment map is section three, one twenty, one oh four eight. And whereas the following plans and documents were submitted as part of the application lists a whole series of things that we've reviewed. Whereas the planning board is familiar with the site, the surrounding area and the proposed improvement plans and the use of property, it takes note of the planned elimination of one dwelling unit as part of the proposed construction project. And whereas the planning board has reviewed the staff reports prepared by James J. Hahn Engineering dated July twenty-seven and September one for the application and on August four two thousand seventeen and September seven two thousand seventeen held and considered duly notice public hearings. And whereas the improvements to a two-family house is a type-two action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act and is therefore exempt from further review, environmental review and therefore be resolved, the planning board of Village Dog's Ferry hereby grants site plan approval for the subject application condition on the following. One, all applicable provisions of the village, county and state regulations should be met. Two, prior to the issuance of the building permit, all required site plan and engineering review fees shall be paid and all items in the consulting engineer's memos dated July twenty-seven, September one, two thousand seventeen shall be addressed to his satisfaction. Prior to the issuance of a building permit for the subject application, a site landscape plan should be finalized to the satisfaction of the village's consulting planner. And that might be where we can add in the, the addition of a tree.
A replacement tree for the locals.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. The following language shall be added to the plan approved subject to all requirements and conditions of a resolution dated September seven of the planning board of Village Dog's Ferry, any change, erasure, modification, revision of this plan absent reapproval from the planning board shall void the application. I make the motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Well, we look forward to seeing, uh, another nice house on Livingston. As noted, uh, item four, three sixty-four Ashford, that's been withdrawn tonight. Item five, seventy-two Buena Vista Drive, public hearing for site plan review for proposed expansion of existing sunroom and proposed new sap on grade.
My name is Miles, I'm here representing Michael Lewis Architects and the owners at seventy-two Buena Vista Drive. Um, a lot of this will be familiar material, so we'll move, uh, quickly.
Just move quickly, I'm gonna move to open the public hearing, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, problem. Uh, here we have the survey, um, center of colonial on a half acre plot. And you will see the existing closed porch that the owners are hoping to expand. We're in area of the property in question. And you can see it's setback a little further from the street than the adjacent properties making any proposed addition a little bit less intrusive and screened from the street. Here we have view from the street approaching from the south. Continuing our approach, we see existing closed porch. On the north, still on the street, um, still see the porch. Also note the heavy foliage, all of which is existing to remain. Here is site plan, few points to note on here. This is the existing closed porch area, proposed work and the proposed addition. Uh, the addition would come in at about fourteen feet wide, fifteen feet long and thirteen feet tall, including a raised octagonal roof that we'll get to. Um, we're here in front of the planning board, this addition is larger than ten feet, but not by an enormous amount. Um, as you can see, here is the setback line, however, is well within that line and all grand scheme and so both shown on the site plan is existing to remain. The zoning chart, um, is the same as was presented previously, call tech calculations are below and before here. Plans from left to right, we have the demo of existing structures, proposed construction, closed roof plan. This sheet of elevations, um, is laid out a little bit differently than the last presentation, but there's some changes, um, two points to note, however, uh, the main mass of the proposed addition is ten feet tall, uh, which matches the existing mass of the proposed porch. The addition of the octagonal roof would add three feet green bit, um, to about thirteen feet high. And second to note on the elevations, um, it shows up lightly on this slide, um, but it, a few features that contribute to, to screening of the proposed addition. Um, we have an existing garage along the neighbor to the right of the property line on this elevation. We have the existing fence, the existing trees and existing topography, the proposed addition is within this bowl and below the adjacent property on which screens the proposed addition. This is a photograph showing those four screening elements, the existing garage, fences, trees and topography. Finally, from that hillside looking, uh, this is a view from the southeast, we have the existing view and the proposed addition. And finally, I'd like to note that, uh, as of tonight's hearing on engineering, I have no further comments for this proposal. I'd love to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board have any comments or questions?
Have you been in front of the AHRV yet?
I have, or we have, excuse me.
And have they made a decision?
Approval.
Approval?
Yeah.
Yes, we are, Michael Lewis here, the AHRV, um, exciting project has been a contingent on your.
Thank you.
Any other comments, public board? It's a public hearing, if anyone, I believe you two guys can make that statement.
Your name?
That's good. I would move to close the public hearing.
Second?
All in favor? Thank you.
So, read the motion?
Yes.
All right. Village Dog's Ferry Planning Board Resolution granting site plan approval for the construction of an addition to an existing single-family house together with related building improvements and site work at seventy-two Buena Vista. Whereas Jonathan Abadi and Bonnie Seltzer, S- Seltzer, sorry, owners have applied for site plan approval to construct an addition and make other improvements to the subject building and site at seventy-two Buena Vista Drive and denoted on the tax assessment maps as section blah blah. Whereas the following plans and documents were submitted, and there are a number of them here. Whereas the planning board is familiar with the site and surrounding area and the proposed involvement improvement plans and at their meeting of September seventh, two thousand seventeen held a duly noticed public hearing and all comments considered. And whereas the planning board has reviewed the staff reports prepared by James J. Hahn Engineering dated July thirty-first and September first for the subject application. And whereas the improvements to a single-family house is a type-two action under the state and under SECR and is therefore exempt from further environmental review. Now therefore be resolved that the planning board of Village Dog's Ferry here and grant site plan approval for the subject application, condition on the following. Number one, all applicable provisions of the village, county and state regulations shall be met. Two, prior to the issuance of a building permit, all required site plan and engineering review fees shall be paid and all items in the village consulting engineer's memos dated July thirty-first and September seventh shall be addressed to his satisfaction. Following language shall be added to the plan approved subject to our requirements and conditions of a resolution dated September seventh, two thousand seventeen of the planning board of the Village of Dog's Ferry, New York. Any change, erasure, modification or revision of this plan, absent reapproval from the planning board shall be void, shall void this approval. Be it further resolved, this resolution shall have an effective date of September seventh, two thousand seventeen. I make the motion. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very nice, thank you. The last item on our agenda, item number seven, one ninety-nine Washington Avenue, pre-submission conference for site plan.
What about eighty-four?
Uh, he's not here.
Okay.
He's not here. For site plan review for proposed new in-ground pool and deck.
Good evening, I'm Terry McGuire, I'm representing West Rock Pools. Mr. Gaddassi, who's not here this evening, uh, has given us some last minute changes, hopefully is the, uh, something that you're looking for. He didn't get the, my, uh, the request yesterday at nine oh five in the morning, so I'm not sure, but he's covered anything that you asked of him.
Did these supersede any previous plans?
Yes.
Well, I think you or your office had received the, uh, report of the consulting engineer with, uh, twenty-one items to be.
Right, and we'll leave those items to order, should have to take care of them, they're existing. We received that yesterday at nine oh five.
Yeah, I know. I think you could aim for the pool now.
It's a waterhouse.
Definitely the button. What's there now, lawn? Is this, is this lawn area now?
Yes.
No, is it golf? Is it the?
Oh, no, there's one more house.
Yeah, there's the house.
There's one more house. It shows on.
It's a pre-submission.
It shows on that.
Yeah, those are the ones here, it's, it's.
Property in question.
Yeah. Cause there's a T right about here, is that driver writing?
Into the pool.
I think it would be, here's just one comment, I think it'd be good to show the property, you know, the neighboring buildings on your, uh, survey here. This is pre-submission, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So you're showing us, now we're formerly Michael and Lilia Markasick, I think, you know if we could show where the nearest house is there?
Yeah, because with putting a pool in, you know, it does have a potential impact on the, on the neighbor.
Sound, yeah.
If the house were kind of up that side, it would be more something to think about in terms of screening and so on, so.
That hedgerow is existing or?
Sorry?
There's a hedgerow on the side of the pool.
That's, that's not existence.
That's new.
That was, that was to screen.
Okay. Yeah, so it'd be good to say what's new and, and I assume these other plantings also are new? Everything's new?
So where is the new wall?
Yeah, what's the height of the retaining wall on the western side of the pool?
The retaining wall?
Row or tie?
You see the total lines here.
It must be.
Four foot max.
I drew a five over there, but I really didn't look closer, just go left. Section, oh.
They need a black fence around.
Right here?
Okay.
As soon as it's twenty feet to the pool.
So it's a four-foot retaining wall and then a four-foot fence on top of the retaining wall? Well, I assume that's an existing retaining wall, right? It's encroaching on the neighbor's property.
Yeah, I believe the retaining wall is the one you already had on the back part of the retaining wall.
So this is the retaining wall. Shows, that's what it shows.
You guys can just clarify that in the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I think if, if we had a, an existing plan and then a new plan, it'd be easier to tell what's, you know, what you're adding also.
Right.
And I've forgotten, do we, are there?
Is there a house?
What are other kind of the rules and things around lighting?
lighting?
Setback hole here.
Doors, we must have something in the code, right?
Yes, can't see the bowl, can't see the pavement, that's required, so either downward lighting or obscured glass.
And how about in-pool lighting? Is there any requirement on that?
If, if you can't see it from the neighbor's property, you know, it doesn't really matter, it's not an impact, so it's in the pool, it's okay, it's like, you know, it's not a spotlight coming up and out.
Do you know if they're planning on putting lighting?
Yes, around the pool, yes.
No, around, in the site plan, do you know if they're planning on lighting the pool from elevated standards at some point?
From the house? And the generators, right, you have this equipment?
That's existing, I believe.
And the pump?
Oh, the pump. You're not having a generator, right? That's existing?
I believe it is.
I kind of remember one being out there.
No, the, the pump and chemical...
The indoor pump or...
So the, that has to meet the noise, I mean, do, do these pumps make noise?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, not a lot, but yeah.
That's gonna be a minimum five foot from the property line and under sixty-five decibels, but the, the pumps are usually about that, that decimal level.
All the chlorine, chemical, chemical addition and stuff is around the pump, I imagine.
Um, that's usually just put directly to the pool water.
Oh, okay. So there's no feeder or anything?
No.
It was chlorine or salt?
Uh, well, it, it, this is, that is another one I saw, but it wasn't the end twenty-four.
I'm sure you saw item eleven on engineers and landscape plan, calls for a landscape plan by a landscape architect, landscape designer, it says.
Correct. This may be the...
And what about a lighting plan? Did we talk about that? I mean, I know we touched on it, but I'm sure that this is gonna be lighting, yeah. So we need to see that.
Is this my answer question? It does have specifications for the type of trees, actually, but it's... The landscape plan could be a little darker.
Or rendered, a bit greener.
A little lighter today, but okay. I got a real nice one here if you want. Survey came up for us because he left me...
Yeah, okay.
So what's next?
Yeah, I think, yeah, anybody have any other questions?
Yeah, one other thing, I have a pool, and I have a priority large cabinet to hold all the chemicals and everything, I mean, you might want to show something about where those chemicals are going to be stored, because, well, you know, if you have chlorine, you don't really want it anywhere in the house or near the house, so. So that's a, it's really toxic chemical. Looks like there, there's a wall here, I'm guessing that's four foot tall?
Can you, on the landscape plan, I think you want to see the differences between what's existing and what's new on the landscape plan, so the board can see it.
But I think it's a four foot max, but it doesn't, that's a generic standard, they don't actually say how high it has to be in different places.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. We okay for now?
Yep.
All right, I would move, I mean, have a call for public hearing at our next meeting?
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
You have to work through the building department, notice in a second, all right?
This is formal, then I move we adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.